7:00 PM, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. I'd ask Joey Ennis, Jonathan Wright, and James Ostrom from Troop 68 to come up and lead us in the pledge, please.
(inaudible)
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 Thank you, gentlemen. Some of them are gonna have a great experience this weekend. Troop 68 is going up to Canada, and they're gonna go dog sledding. So it's definitely a cool experience. As I had asked for representatives from the community, I was looking for somebody as far as the seniors go, somebody as far as veterans, and somebody as far as youth go. I haven't had any seniors or any veterans step forward yet, but I do have a youth, and our youth report is going to be given to us by Michael Conklin, Port Jurors High School 9th grader, and he'll be here every two weeks to just give a quick update on what's going on with our youth in Port Jurors. Michael?
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Decker and the council for giving me this opportunity. My name is Michael Conklin, and I'm here to give you some updates on what's going on with the schools and rec department. At the high school, winter sports are winding down. The Run and Raiders had an outstanding weekend at the OCIAA Track and Field Championships. A number of athletes had personal bests on the track and in the field events. At the event, the team pulled in an historic 11 individual medals, the most ever by a four-track team. The boys varsity basketball team slipped past Fallsburg on Saturday with a 50-48 win that enabled this team to clinch a spot in the sectional playoff. And at the middle school, their play, Schoolhouse Rock, is coming up on February 21st at 7:00 PM, and the 22nd at 2:07. Tickets can be purchased in advance by calling 858-3100 or at the door. In elementary schools, kindergarten registration for the 2014-2015 school year will be starting this week for all Port Jurors school residents at HBE on Thursday, February 13th from 3:30 to 5:00. All schools will also have a four-day weekend for Presidents Weekend from February 14th to 17th. The next school board meeting is February 18th at the high school. For more information on any of the school events, you can visit the website at www.vjschools.org or call 858-3100. The rec department's snow tubing trip has been rescheduled for February 24th. The youth basketball caps versus kids game will be coming up on March 8th. For more information on either event, call them at 858-4045. The last Little League signups are the next two weekends at Little League Field. The Port Jurors Free Library will also have an exciting new program coming up called the Rita Shalale the Reading Dog. One Saturday each month, Shalale the Reading Dog will accompany her owner slash handler, Sandy Toussaint, to volunteer their time with the children. This will start in March. If you have any questions, please call 856-7313. And finally, Empowering Port Jurors has some great things for kids, like creative dance for kids on Sundays, toddler time, science Saturdays, and preteen nights. For more information, visit their Facebook page or their location on Irving Fowler Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Great job. So when people say there's not a lot for kids to do, there's a lot for kids to do. We have with us tonight Ted Otney. If some of you guys remember Ted, he's with CHA, our consulting firm, in regards to the bridge in East Main Street corridor. He just wants to give us a brief overview of where we're at now.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor. Thank you for having me. Councilman, thank you for having me up here. Is it okay if I walk away from the mic a little bit? I was asked to come up here, give a little bit of an update. It's been about a year since the last time I was here. Last time I was here, we were talking about the archaeology study that was undertaken, and subsequent to that, we have a couple of reports that we did. Before I jump into what we've done in the last year, just for some of the new phases, we're gonna step through the projects real quick. I'm pretty familiar with the project corridor, I think. I'm very open to questions. If anybody has any questions, what's going on, just hit me as I go. Some of the objectives of the overall project, in addition to the bridges that we will be talking about, the realignment of South Maple Ave, so that we have a four-way intersection versus the offset intersection that's going on at Maple Ave. There's two box structures that we'll be replacing at the east end of the project. One of those structures is actually a historic structure. It's a jackard structure, one of the last ones in New York State. We did a documentation. That's one of the things that we carried out since the last time I was here, is we did a Harv's study of that structure, documented it. They took some black and white photos. It'll be put on the University of Albany, it'll be stored in the archives. Then the Never Sink Bridge, which is certainly the bridge that we would like to get replaced. Stepping through some of the options that we've seen over the years, this was option A with the new bridge downstream. That ran into problems because of the floodway issues. Then we kinda switched this way. We were gonna build a temporary bridge downstream, and rebuilt a new bridge on its existing footprint. Everybody recalls, there were some issues, some cons, if you will, with this alternative. This structure right here, in this quadrant of the bridge, in this quadrant of the bridge, it was recognized, when we started doing the evaluation of this structure, those two buildings were gonna be irreparably damaged. So we were looking at the fact that we were gonna take down this building, take down this building, and build a temporary bridge. And the cost was really getting unbalanced, so we came back, we looked at putting a bridge upstream of the existing one. This was our first blush at it, and it had a lot of impact on the highest property over here. We went back to the drawing board, and we were able to kinda stagger the bridges through a staged construction technique. We'll be able to build a bridge a lot closer to its existing footprint. So it reduced, it didn't eliminate, but it reduced the impacts on the highest property here. The line I've shown in there, I left in there, that was, just to give a perspective of how much that line moved. Right there is the sidewalk of this alternative. And then, you know, the sidewalk is still right there, and that's how much we moved it in. That's option C modified. That is the option that we are moving forward with, with all of our studies at this point in time. The roadway work that we will be doing, it will incorporate a third lane within the corridor, that third lane being a center turn lane, or a left turn lane as we're at the signals. It will, these center turn lanes have been proven to really increase efficiency, because it takes out the friction associated with the left turn queuing. And this is a picture of the proposed structure. What I'd really like to point out with the proposed structure over the Never Sink is that the bridge, the beams will be underneath the bridge, in lieu of where the existing bridge has all the structure above it, i.e. the truss. So we will have a, you know, more of a traditional bridge when a project is complete. Apologize, this is very bright in here. This identified the three structures that were coming down, and where the archaeology was being performed, the archaeology studies. And this is where I just wanted to give everybody the update of what we've done over the past year. We've done the reconnaissance survey and report, and that's, you know, there's a series of documents up here that were compiled over the past year, mostly early part of 2013, associated with the archaeology. Since then, let's see. This is the big one here. SHPO, that one, that's the one I wanted to get to. SHPO has concurred with our mitigation plan that we're gonna do for this, and they've agreed with everything we've done, what we've found, what needs to be done. We've got that letter. As of April 1st, we are clear with the State Historic Preservation Office. One of the things that we were talking about the last time I was here was the need to send letters to the respective Indian tribes that have some history in the area. Those letters went out on March 29th. Today, we only received one response from the Indian tribes. And we're still, you know, as I stand here today, we're still waiting for responses from the other Indian tribes. When we presented this presentation last year, we put it out there that what was required was sending one letter to the Indian tribes with a 40-day response period. If they didn't respond within 40 days, a second letter would be sent out, you know, with a 45-day response period, and the time would be up. Having gone through that period, and they didn't respond, CHA and New York State DOT are trying to figure out, can we, you know, pass, you know, like force their hand to pass on their ability to participate with this project? It's not really clear, you know. We expected a response. We expected a response within 45 days. Yes, we want to be involved. No, we don't want to be involved. So New York State DOT is doing some research as far as whether or not we can sign off on the Indian tribes. Then, the thing that was on the cusp when I was here the last time was the threatened and endangered species that we had to investigate. Subsequent to the meeting, when I was here in February, we talked to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the New York State DEC. They said, yes, there are mussels in the Never Sink, in and around this bridge. You need to hire somebody to go out there and look for them. The person has to be specialized and trained in this sort of scientific research. We had this big conference call on March 29th, excuse me, on April 29th. It was logistically fun trying to get everybody together, and even if it was a conference call, we couldn't even get everybody on a conference call. And a lot of the, the U.S., at the federal level, they were being pulled out because of the sequestration that was going on at the time. We had people in St. Lawrence River saying, oh, we'll try to come in if we can get our Wi-Fi on. June 4th, the city approved our efforts to proceed with a biological assessment and bring onboard the subconsultant. Their name is Ecologic. So even though Ecologic is trained to do it, they can't just jump in the water and go start looking for mussels. They're an endangered species, and before they could actually jump in their waters and start looking for mussels, they had to get a license from New York State DEC to go in there and perform the study. In addition to waiting for the study, the license, we had to wait for optimal conditions for them to go in there and look for the species. And at the same time, I don't wanna say this was all the mussels in the water, there's, I think, seven or eight species that we had to investigate, including the Indiana bat. We had to look for habitat for those, the eagle, the bald eagle, to make sure that there wasn't any roosting areas, winter roosting areas. And I think they also looked for habitat for the bog turtle. There's the license I talked about. Survey was performed in August. You know, like I said, Ecologic was out there looking for the mussels, CHA was out there looking for the other species. Whether we, we don't necessarily look for the species. Some of the people think, well, no, we seen a bog turtle. Now why are we looking for a bog turtle? Well, we're not out there looking for a bog turtle. We're looking for habitat that might support the bog turtle. So the report was issued in September, and that was subsequently compiled into this report that's been submitted. This is, this is the biological assessment that we had to work towards. It documents all the different species that we looked at. That was submitted to the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the New York State DEC requesting concurrence of no impact to species. So that's kinda the good news, the silver lining in the whole thing. We did our studies, and, you know, no significant habitat was found within the direct impact area, nor were there any species found, especially the mussels in the river. One mussel, I believe, was found, but it was far enough downstream that it won't be impacted by the project. Any questions on threatened and endangered species?
I have a question.
Sure.
We sent letters out to three tribes. We got a response from one, and they said they wanted to be involved in the project.
Yes.
So wouldn't it be reasonable to say, like, to what extent is their involvement in the project? Is that keeping them up to date on anything that we would find, or making any artifacts available to them?
Yes.
So wouldn't it be reasonable that if the other two tribes haven't answered us in a year, that we would just make them available to all three at that time?
We need, we need them to engage us, because the next document that has to go out is the MOA, the Memorandum of Agreement.
Right.
We need to know that they wanna be engaged, and that they're gonna sign this document, because we need to make, we need to make a document with signature lines on it. They're either on it or they're not.
Well, my point is, here we are, a year later, even though work was done subsequent to it, we're getting to the point where we could actually start the project, and we're waiting every day for a phone call from people we don't even know halfway across the country.
Yeah.
So what's the process to get that engagement done, so we can get the project going?
We need to send out more letters. Other than that, we're doing some research to that.
Ted and I met with Vincent Jack today, and the pressure really needs to be put on the New York State DOT to move this project to the top of the pile, instead of bogging it down with all these specifics. Like he said, he was told that it was a 45-day waiting period, 45-day waiting period. After 90 days, it should have been completed.
Yeah, it was.
And it wasn't. So, just so happens that I ran into Senator Bonnison yesterday, and I discussed this with him, and I told him that I'd be meeting with CHA, and they will be receiving a letter, and it will spell out all of the issues that we're dealing with on this bridge.
Great.
The other two tribes that we're waiting for a response for, do we know if they're still active tribes?
That's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. I'm not the point person making the contact. That contact had to be done through New York State DOT's cultural resource liaison. I mean, they're all valid questions. I can ask them back through New York State DOT, and maybe with the letter, it'll bring some attention to it. Where we're going from here, the New York State DOT is doing another effort to obtain the responses from the Indian tribes, not only looking to get a response from them, but then look at the contingency if we don't get a response. How can we move forward and make sure that ultimately what the New York State DOT needs to do is document, sufficiently document that contact was made or attempted, so that we don't get two weeks from starting construction, and somebody comes forward and says, wait, wait a minute, I wasn't contacted on this. We don't want our artifacts impacted, and, you know, and then, you know, all of a sudden, we stop dead in our tracks another year from now. Ultimately, that's the thing, is to make sure that nobody can come forward at a later date. So that's, you know, we're coordinating the Indian tribes' biological assessment. This task is done. The test is done. We just need the concurrence from, like I said, from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the New York State DEC. We've been in contact with them right along throughout the whole process. We do suspect that we will get, we will readily get concurrence of the no impact from both The data recovery plan jumps us back to the archaeological efforts. This is, you know, that letter that I referenced that we got from SHPO endorsed our data recovery plan. So at some point in the future, prior to construction, the archaeologists will remobilize and try to recover anything that may be on that site. Once we figure out where the Indian tribes are and whatnot they wanna be part of the process, we can actually get the Memorandum of Agreement circulating. The signatories on that Memorandum of Agreement, the Memorandum of Agreement is what's stipulating and documenting, documenting what the project is gonna impact. A lot of it has to do with the archaeology, excuse me, historic aspects of the bridge. The Never Sink Bridge is historic, and like I said, the culvert at Claude Brook is historic. So it's gonna document that every effort was made to save them, and everybody agrees, all these parties agree that every effort was made to save these structures, but there was no saving. That should go around. Same thing's gonna be about the archaeological area, that every effort was made to avoid the archaeological aspects of it, but there was no choice. That's what the MOA says. Everybody tried their best, we agreed that we have to move forward. Once we get the MOA, then we can get this design report finalized into New York State DOT, who will give it to FHWA, who will give us NEPA concurrence. NEPA being the National Environmental Protection Act. Once we have NEPA concurrence, then we can have design approval. The city grants design approval in this case, so I think that'll be a given. But we need all those aspects, all those elements, before we can do that design approval. And that design approval, that design approval is really that line in the sand that we need to cross before we can start designing the bridge, start doing the right-of-acquisition. If I was to start designing the bridge, and our structural engineers start designing the bridge before design approval is obtained, if and when the feds find out about that, the city would not receive reimbursement from the, from the FHWA.
I have another question.
Yep.
So when you're in a conservative estimate of time to get all those approvals, to the point where you just said that we'll go for a design approval, are you talking about a year?
I'm thinking three months.
Three months.
Yeah, if we can get this letter out, stand on, you know, work with the DOT and get this out, I got a schedule coming up here.
Let me just say that Mr. Segal, Mr. Bell, I'll be talking about this a little bit, but this weekend, we went and listened to the governor. The governor specifically stated, and of course, this will be stated also in the letter, that the Tappan Zee Bridge Plan had been 20 years in the making, and within one year of him being in office, they broke ground to rebuild the Tappan Zee Bridge. So we're gonna use that, because that's the same situation that we have here. Mr. Lopez has pictures of that bridge, that it's a dilapidated bridge, and it's being held together. What's the saying, the strap?
Bootstraps and suspenders.
Bootstraps and suspenders. It's being held together by. And as I said in my State of the City address, it will be closed down if we're red flagged on it. You know what? I know it's Route 6, and people will be up in arms, but this project has been in the works since 2001. We're now at 2014, and it's just an embarrassment that it hasn't gotten to this point, because certain people have drugged their feet. And the time's come to make sure that they follow what they're supposed to do.
But at the same time, there, I read in the paper the other day that they were stealing money out of the bridge fund, and there's a third of it left.
So it's gonna...
Reallocated.
I'm sorry.
Reallocated.
They reallocated the money, and I hope that that doesn't affect us either, because at some point, this bridge is just, the suspenders are gonna break.
I put, you know, in anticipation of this meeting, I did put together another projection schedule. It's as good as the information I have when I put this schedule together. But I do, you know, I hope that we can get to design approval in June of this year. And what we'll do is, we will fast-track the design for the two structures at the end of the project, the two boxes. I suspect they will be pre-tasked boxes, so it will take a lot of design effort, you know, to get the structures in. As we talked about at the last public meeting, we're gonna close the road down for three days, replace a bridge, open the road, week later, close the road down for three days, replace a bridge, reopen the road. So there won't be a lot of MPT, maintenance protection of traffic plans, that'll go together pretty quick. So, and I'm estimating that, you know, that construction will start in April of 2015. There is a little bit of a cushion in there for that April 20, to get to that April 2015 at this point. I didn't wanna say we're gonna start construction in February 2015, because nobody's gonna purchase construction with weather like this. So we'll get that under construction, see some activity out there, get those out of the way, and then what we'd like to do is have the design for the Never Sink Bridge and the roadway, and the intersection improvements, all done by May of 2015. The right-of-way clearance will be a critical path item. Once we, you know, I would say, once we cross that design approval line in the sand, then the two critical path items become the right-of-way clearance and utility relocation. So we'll be kinda pushing those as we move forward. That'll all result in, I believe, a, you know, construction start in, of August 2015. So that's it. That's the whole thing. I'll certainly entertain any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, how long after the start of construction? What's the project, estimated time for the project to be built?
That one will go August 2016, fall 20. To the fall of 2016.
So 14 months.
Oh, yeah, yes.
15 months.
And it's possible it'll roll into 2017, but that bridge would be up and running by 2016. But, you know, there's a, as the project finishes out at the end of 2016, all the trees that need to be planted, the grass needs to be planted, some of the top course pavement, you know, can't be done in October, November, so it may winter over. But the project would be substantially complete in the fall of 2016.
Ted, the only thing I ask is if you could send me an email of PowerPoint.
Sure.
Any other questions from the council?
This Claude Brook, that's the ones that we had hoped to start in October, right?
Yes. Yeah, and, you know, until we get the design approval, it's all one project. You can't do anything.
When do we talk to the people, when do you talk to the people about their property loss?
After design approval.
That's, was it the one before that? I thought you had it on there.
Yeah, when we find out about the Native American tribes and their sign-off.
Yeah, I didn't really have anything listed as far as contacting the residents. That would fall, you know, under this part of the schedule here. They'll be working, as soon as we get design approval, it would be between June 2014 and right-of-way clearance of February 2015, and we can actually start doing assessments, appraisals, I should say, start doing appraisals, and talking with property owners, and making offers. We can't even go there until after design approval.
Can you put that in the schedule, because some of those home, those landowners are asking.
Thank you. Any other questions, council? Department heads? Okay, thanks, Ted. I appreciate it. While Ted just clears up here, we'll jump over to public comment for a second, and then we'll, we'll do approval of the minutes of the last council meeting. Do I have a motion?
Some of it.
I have a motion by Mr. Segal, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ritchie. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstain? So carry. Insurance and finance, Mr. Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. Very short report tonight. We have, well, a couple of bills to pay. Under the general water funds, some of the larger ones, for social security for January, Global Motel Group, that's the January gasoline and diesel, $12,760.35. Coaster Associates, pumps, emergency on Merm Road Pump Station, $8,477.69. And Metro Media Energy, January natural gas, $11,001.8. From the capital fund, CR Health Electric, Beach Road Pump Station Pump Control Panel, The total from the general fund, $428,405.68. From the water fund, $26,365.6. From the capital fund, $40,486.62. For a total of $495,257.36. I'll make the motion to pay those bills. total of $495,257.36. I'll make the motion to pay those bills.
I have a motion by Mr. Bell to pay those bills, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bobozzo. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
I have nothing else, Mayor, except that our next meeting will be on Tuesday, the 18th, following DPW and fire.
Thank you, sir. Fire and Emergency Management, Mr. Walagroski.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have a list of events that was brought forth from Dick Drew, the Fire Department Secretary. Dear Mayor Decker and members of City Council, it is requested that the below-listed event be approved for the following Port Jervis fire companies. Foul rescue and salvage number three, September 27th, attend Orange County Volunteer Fireman's Parade. June 8th, soapbox derby, sausage and pepper booth. May 10th, car wash. June 21st, car wash. August 16th, a car wash. From Mahogma Hook and Ladder, May 17th, motorcycle run ending up at Riverside Park. March 29th, chicken barbecue. Port Jervis Fire Police, June 22nd, a car wash with a rain date of June 29th for the Fire Department. February 22nd, mandatory OSHA training at the Port Jervis High School. I like motion we accept those, all for, except for the May 17th, Mahogma Hook and Ladder Motorcycle Run. I'd like to ask that the Fire Department contact the DPW and Chief Warden in regards to that, in case they have any conflicts with that.
Hey, I have a motion for Mr. Walagroski on events. Second by Mr. Bell. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Thank you. Dear Mayor Decker and members of City Council, it is hereby requested that the below-named member of the Port Jervis Fire Department and Excelsior Engineering Company Number Five be removed from the act of membership rules effective this date. Robert Schulman, the reason for violation of Article 5, Section 4 of the company bylaws. Make that a motion, please.
I have a motion, second by Mr. Siegel. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
It is requested that the below-named firefighters be approved as probationary drivers for the company at Port Jervis Fire Department, as stated, for foul rescue and salvage number three. Michael Petiti, Mark Clavelli, Kenneth Howell. I make that a motion. We accept those probationary drivers.
Second.
I have a motion to accept probationary drivers by Mr. Walagroski, a second by Mr. Ritchie. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
The only other thing I have is Chief Rhodes informed me tonight that the new ladder truck will be delivered tomorrow at five, around 5:00 PM at the Orange Street Firehouse. It doesn't mean it's going to be put in service right away. There's still probably a week or so. We have to have, the truck has to be weighed, a whole bunch of, there's, there's a list, a punch list that basically has to be done. There has to be some training done. They just can't take and put the fire truck and put the key in and go. But tomorrow at 5:00 PM, the, the new ladder truck will be delivered to the Orange Street Firehouse. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walagroski. Mr. Siegel, before your
code in legislative, I'd like to move back to public comment. If there's anybody that would like to speak during public comment period, please just give your name and your location where you live, and you have a five-minute time limit?
That's perfect timing, Mayor.
Why's that?
Just understanding.
Oh, yeah. Well, I figured they would want to go up and talk, and then they could leave before you started. Anybody? Not hearing anybody? They all want to be tortured to. Mr. Siegel's coding legislative.
Grab a beverage, some snack. Enjoy. It was brought to my attention earlier today that there was an article in New York Times, and I'll read some excerpts from it. It fits right into our plan to try to do something about abandoned properties. In part, it says, "On Monday, Eric Schneiderman, New York Attorney General, is expected to outline legislation that he hopes will force banks to take responsibility for vacant properties, providing some help to cities like Newburgh, where officials estimate 10% of all homes are in some state of abandonment." New York State has roughly 50, 15,000 vacant homes and leads the nation in the time required to foreclose on a home, excuse me, at almost three years. The bill, Mr. Schneiderman, will be asking Albany lawmakers to embrace, will make lenders responsible for homes soon after they are abandoned, requiring banks to register their properties in a central database and pay for their upkeep. This will not be easy, in part, because banks, homeowners, and city officials often disagree on what constitutes abandonment. As a result, the Attorney General plans to define the term, these people say. The legislation will propose that a house can be deemed abandoned if the bank has not received a mortgage payment after a yet undetermined number of weeks. Other conditions like broken windows also could be considered. If a property is vacant and deteriorating, the bank has a duty to maintain it, maintain it, and move swiftly, swiftly to resolve the foreclosure case. Mr. Schneiderman also expects to propose a separate bill that would double the number of land banks in New York State from 20, to 20 from 10. Land banks are state-funded nonprofit organizations that pay to rehabilitate vacant properties. It goes on and on and on. It's on New York Times online. This may help us a great deal if it goes through, and I would expect parts of it will, will happen. At the next code meeting, which will be tomorrow, we'll be discussing Chapter 464, entitled Streets, Sidewalks, and Public Property. We'll be discussing vacant property assessment fee. We'll be discussing rental building annual fee, new construction underground utilities, flat roof construction, water fee to water tax change, Section C 6-22 of the Charter entitled Manner of Conducting Sales of Lands for Taxes and Puppy Mills. Now, it's going to be quite a meeting.
Mayor, you're coming today, right?
I will not be there.
Yeah.
Okay, that'll shorten it a bit.
Yep.
The code agendas and minutes are on portjervisny.org. If anybody would like to see them, they're, they're there, they're available, or we could send them to you if you ask. And the next meeting, as I said, which was originally scheduled for February 5th, was rescheduled till tomorrow night at 7:00 PM in the mayor's conference room. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel. Public Works and Environmental Affairs?
I, I need one more minute. I have a resolution I have to read.
Oh, yes, important.
Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Port Jervis, Orange County, New York, declaring lead agency status under SECR for proposed local law number one of 2014, a local law amending the Port Jervis zoning map. Be hereby resolved that the Port Jervis Common Council of the City of Port Jervis, Orange County, New York, does pursuant to the provisions of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, designates itself as lead agency for the purpose of SECR review of local law number one of 2014, being entitled "A Local Law Amending the Port Jervis Zoning Map, Specifically Changing the Zoning District Designation for Certain Properties As Described in a Local Law from CBD to S and SC to RO." I make that a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Siegel, a second by Mr. Bell. In discussion, this is the area that we've been talking about, Hammond Street Franklin, Spring Fowler, all the way up to Orchard Street, up here on Sussex Street, so that these houses can go back to residential use rather than being in the downtown commercial district. Any other discussions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'm done for now.
Public Works and Environmental Affairs, Mr. Cunningham.
Are you sure, Stan? All right, little update right now. Garbage and recycling are on the normal schedule this week. Next week, due to the President's Day holiday, garbage and recycling will be one day later than normal in all wards. Cardboard and papers will be picked up in the third ward on Friday, February 21st. DPW crews serviced the last two snowstorms on February 3rd and February 5th. Our crews are now removing piles of snow that have been created from the last two snowstorms. The beach road pump station upgrades are near complete. State of Art Control, excuse me, State of Art Control Panels have been delivered and are now being wired. And please, a little reminder, we ask that everybody comply with the city winter parking ordinance. The ordinance states, "From December 1st through April 1st, no vehicles shall park on any city streets or highways between the hours of 1:00 AM and 6:00 AM. The fine for violating this law, number 505-28A, shall be $25." Now, we know that due to the amount of snow that we've had recently, that the city sometimes removes snow after hours, and it's important that the cars and the trucks and vehicles are off the road. Our next DPW meeting will be next Tuesday, February 18th, in the downstairs conference room. Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you, sir. Police Committee, Mr. Hendrick.
Thank you, Mayor. The police committee met on February 6th. Chief Warden briefed the committee about an opportunity for potential grant funding under the 2014 Drug-Free Community Support Program, known as DFC, but has determined there is a 100% match required, which may be perverted in the city considering the application. I think you're in receipt of the February Police Committee meeting minutes, and I motion that they be accepted at this time.
Second. Motion by Mr. Hendrick to accept the minutes of the January police report, I'm sorry, February police report. Second by Mr. Ritchie. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
And also, everybody's in receipt of the monthly police report from January, and I motion that also be accepted at this time.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hendrick for the January police report, and a second by Mr. Ritchie. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
The next police committee meeting will be Monday, March 3rd at 6:30 PM here in the council chambers, at which time the results of our inspection and audit completed by our insurance carrier will be reviewed, as well as other items. And one last thing, the police contract negotiating team met with the representatives of the police bargaining unit, and future negotiation sessions will be scheduled. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Liaison, CDA, IDA, Mr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Mayor. The CDA hasn't met since our last meeting, but we are scheduled to meet on February 26th, the second floor of the Recreation Center at 7:00 PM. And the IDA will be meeting February 12th at 6:00 AM here in the council chambers. That's all I have. 6:00 PM, I'm sorry.
Okay.
That's all I have.
I could be there at 6:00 AM. Thank you, Mr. Ritchie.
I've got emails ready that are already.
Yeah, very right. ADA, Mr. Hendrick.
Thank you, Mayor. The committee attentively set a meeting for this Thursday at 4:00 PM, contingent on availability of new members. However, as two of the members are unavailable, the meeting will be rescheduled and announced at the next council meeting. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Housing Authority, Mr. Siegel.
Thank you, Mayor. The last Housing Authority meeting was January 15th. The next Housing Authority meeting is February 19th at 7:00 PM Hillside Terrace. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Recreation Commission, Mr. Walagroski.
Thank you, Mayor. The snow tube, the snow tubing trip scheduled for Monday, February 3rd was postponed due to inclement weather. It has been rescheduled for Monday, February 24th. The bus will still leave Port Jervis at 4:45 PM. He will snow tube from 6:00 to 8:00 PM and return to Port Jervis by 9:00 PM. Close to 60 adults and children have already signed up. If you are interested in going, please contact the Recreation Office for more information. The office number is 858-4045, or email us at pjrec@francisdudan.net. Our co-ed youth basketball, fifth and sixth grade league will continue this Wednesday, February 12th at 6:30 at the ASK Gym. Our Saturday youth basketball program will be off this Saturday, February 15th, and will resume on February 22nd. Mark your calendars for Saturday, March 8th, when we hold our annual Cops versus Kids basketball game. The game pits our Port Jervis PD against our sixth graders from our Saturday program. Game, the game will be held at the ASK Gym, and the time is 10:00 AM. This game is also a candy drive, so please bring an item with you to the game. The adult basketball is offered every Friday night at the ASK Gym from 8:00 to 10:00 PM. This program is for Port Jervis School District residents only. The participants must be at least 18 years of, 18 years of age and out of high school. They must prove, proof of identification. The youth center was very busy last week, and last Friday, 76 teens attended our Friday Night Teen Night. The teens listened to a guest speaker, Wade Young, from the organization Right Choices, and then participated in Team Tribute Night. The youth center's schedule for President's Weekend will be 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM on Friday, February 14th and February 17th. The youth karate with Dale and Espy started last week, and were run for a total of six weeks. Close to 50 kids have signed up to participate. The Slay Riding Hill at West End Beach is all set up and open. Adults and children can sled daily during daylight hours. Remember, no skis or snowboards. The next Recreation Commission meeting will be held on Tuesday, February 18th, 2014, at 7:00 PM at the youth center. I make a motion, we accept the recreation update.
I have a motion by Mr. Walagroski to accept the recreation update. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hendrick. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Anything else? Thank you, sir. Mr. Bobozzo, tourism.
All right. I haven't done one of these in a while, so I'm excited to get back into the swing of it. I'd like to make a motion that the council approve the following dates for city events. The Fourth Annual Citywide Yard Sale to be Saturday, May 3rd, with a rain date of Sunday, May 4th. The 22nd Annual Fall Foliage Festival to be Sunday, September 28th, and the Second Annual Chris Kindle Market to be Sunday, December 7th. And included in that motion would be permission to ask the DPW to hang street banners approximately four to six weeks in advance of the events, to ask for street closings as needed, and to ask the DPW Police Department and Fire Police for assistance. I make that a motion. Second.
So we have a motion for events on tourism by Mr. Bobozzo, a second by Mr. Oni. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
And as somebody who walked his way through the yard sale, ate his way through the Fall Foliage Festival, and shopped his way through the Chris Kindle Market, I'm excited that those events will be back next year. And everybody from the city of Port Jervis should be out at those events. They're fantastic spectacles of what, of the best side of Port Jervis. A lot of active members in the community coming together to put these events together and to make them successful. So please be there, please show your support for the tourism board and for the city. The board's next meeting is Wednesday, February 12th at 6:30 PM downstairs in the basement conference room of this building. And that is all that I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Zoning Board, Mr. Ritchie.
Thank you, Mayor. The zoning board met on February 4th, and in front of the board, there was a pre-submission for Zara Realty LLC, which is 33, 35, 37, and 39 East Main Street, which is the KFC property and the adjourning properties next to it. There was a variant, they wanted a variance to allow for 21 parking spaces, where 38 are required. Mr. Fuller, the engineer who represents the applicant, thought with the drive-through that there was, he didn't think there would be a need for the additional spaces. He also explained to the board that it would be extensive work to be done and, and expensive. Some of the things that would have to be done is grading, you have to buy, build a retaining wall, and a storm runoff for drainage. So after discussion, the board set a public hearing for March 4th at the council chambers at 7:00 PM. So if anybody is interested in commenting on this project, they show up March 4th at 7:00 PM. The planning board is scheduled to meet on March, I mean, February 18th. And before the board, I'm sorry, there'll be a conditional use permit for Zara Realty, and then pre-submission for Dunkin' Donuts. And that's a lot line change and a site development plan to allow for 12 additional parking spaces and a new exit onto the east. and a new exit onto East Main Street. So anybody interested in those two projects, please show up on February 18th at 7:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. Plumbing and electrical boards, Mr. Segal.
Thank you, Mayor. Plumbing board and electrical board meetings for February have been canceled due to the snow. The next meeting is on March 19th for both, with the plumbing board at 6:30, and electrical board 6:45, just before the codes meeting.
Are you sure that's March 19th?
I'm not sure of anything, but I thought it was.
What? It's the first Wednesday.
Oh, give me a number.
5th, March 5th.
March 5th.
I apologize for that. It's March 5th at 6:30 and 6:45. What would a meeting be if I didn't?
Senior advisory, Mr. Segal.
Okay, here we go. The senior advisory, I met with representatives of residents of all the senior facilities over the, during the past two months, and there are no issues to report, I'm glad to say. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have an access 23rd?
No, we do not. They usually have to report at the second meeting of the month.
Gotcha. Okay. Under Mayor's Correspondence and Information Update, this week, my church for the week is St. Lutheran's Church at 31 West Main Street. Service starts at 10 o'clock. I'll be leaving out of here at the side of City Hall at 9:30, if anybody'd like to join me. As I made my rotation, we did the Deer Park Reform Church two weeks ago for the Scout Sunday, and it was really great. I do have some appointments that I neglected. For Tom Vicarello, who worked very hard for us, I didn't realize he was up on the planning board, so I'm reappointing him as chairman for the next five years on the planning board. I had appointed Mike Latini for five years on recreation, but recreation has a stipulation where their members when fully appointed are seven years, so we're going to extend that to seven years. And I'd like to appoint George Belcher to the tourism board for a period of two years. Mr. Kidney is now officially retired, and I again want to thank him. I'm sure he's watching, right? I want to thank him for his many years of service to the city, and for being here at the council meetings. I will be appointing a committee to search for our new code enforcement official. If you go to our city's website, NICSIL is up and running. NICSIL is our alert system. It's very, very simple to sign up. If you come onto our homepage, it's on the right-hand side. It'll just give you a brief overview of what you have to do. Very simple. Literally take you less than 30 seconds to sign up, and you will get alerts from the city when we deem something is necessary that has to go out en masse to the public. You can either have it emailed to you, or sent to you as a text on your phone. And that will include Office of Emergency Management, Police Department, and Fire. The council will be still under consideration of the warming shelter that is being requested here in the city. We do have some contact with our insurance company, got some answers back from the people who are doing the warming shelters, so we'll be in discussion with that. But in the meantime, I still want to thank Valerie Majewski's here tonight, I want to thank you and your people from empowering Port Jervis for keeping the warming station going. Mr. Tomasi, I also saw your post calling for volunteers for that, and it's much appreciated. I want to thank Vince and his crew with the storm cleaning and cleaning off the streets and sidewalks, done an excellent job with a big snowstorm, and I understand that he's got a big one possibly coming on Thursday. And the only thing I asked him is not to mention anything about going over budget. And also, we're on it with the police department. The police department, kudos to the gentlemen and ladies of the Port Jervis Police Department. There was an incident in the town of Deer Park this weekend. They were called for mutual aid. The suspects in the situation were apprehended, and I received a phone call from our district attorney's office, our district attorney yesterday, and saying that our ladies and gentlemen were professionals and did a fantastic job. And that's our police department, our DPW, our building department, fire department, all at work for us. Thank you.
It's on Channel 7 News tonight.
Was it?
Monday, Saturday, the Thursday.
On Saturday, several officials from the fire department, the police department, Office of Emergency Management, and City Council went to North Rockland High School, where we received a presentation on the New York State's New Citizen Preparedness Program. The program was presented by the New York State Office of Homeland Security and the National Guard, after the audience had been introduced to Governor Cuomo, who also came to the event, and who spelled out his plans for the New York State First Homeland Security Disaster Preparedness and Weather Forecasting Programs. Residents of the city of Port Jervis are going to be offered this same type of training in the short future. It'll be totally volunteer. We're going to work with our neighborhood watches, our fire department, to start these presentations, so that people can understand that there's four simple steps when there's a disaster. The first one is to develop an emergency plan. Two, to build a kit, which they gave all of the attendees, and which we are going to work on building one of these kits right here. And this is a to-go kit. This to-go kit you take with you in an emergency, and this to-go kit is set up so that you can sustain yourself for up to seven days without any necessary help from anybody else, unless obviously you're severely injured, then of course you would seek medical help. Number three is to be aware and to get involved. I want to thank again those gentlemen who gave their time on Saturday morning to learn about this valuable program. And if you're interested in getting involved or looking at this before you are trained, you can check out New York, actually, it's NY Prepare. So preparing yourself, NY, New York State, nyprepare.gov, and you can find out more about this plan. Really great program. I have a request from the Mental Health Association to reserve Veterans Park for Friday, April 11th, from 10:00 to 2:00, and this is for the annual Clothesline Project. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Segal. Second by Mr. Bell. Discussion?
What was the date?
It is April 11th, from 10:00 to 2:00. If you haven't seen, the Clothesline Project is definitely something that's moving, because you get the feeling of how people are really mistreated in this Clothesline Project. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. I have a request from the First Baptist Church, who's requesting Point Peter Overlook for their annual sunrise service from 6:00 in the morning to 7:00 in the morning on April 20, 2014. We did approve one last, or two weeks ago at our last meeting, but it does not conflict with the times, so can I have a motion to accept?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walagroski, a second by Mr. Cunningham. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. This is from Kathy Shortell. She needs council approval to attend the Serve Safe, Serving Safe Food Seminar. She goes every year. There's a fee of $135. This is on March 11th, 2014. She drives up in the morning and drives back at night. She does not stay. Need a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Segal. Second by Mr. Oney. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Just to let everybody know that February 27th at 7:00 p.m. in the City Hall conference room, there is a snow date of March 6th, is the Community Conversations on Children's Mental Health. Mental illness affects nearly all American families, and addressing this issue is vital to promote the health of our communities. So we would invite you to make contact with Pat Savino, the Outreach Coordinator, who would like RSVP. This will be up on our website, and I'll make sure that it also goes on our Facebook. But it is a good program to get to understand the mental health issues that are out there. I have our annual $10 membership fee for the Arbor Day Foundation. Have a motion on that?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Hendrick, second by Mr. Ritchie. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. That'll be the cheapest one I can give you.
That comes out of the mayor's line, though.
Plus, you can get some trees with that. You should get the trees and plant them somewhere.
We are looking at Arbor Day ceremonies, which will be Friday, April 25th, and we're looking to see, we might do it at the middle school, where the middle school just took down trees. And the kids will be involved, because it'll be a Friday, and it actually falls on Arbor Day. I have a request. This is Orange County Technical Committee on a meeting that'll be Tuesday, February 18th at 10:00 o'clock. It focuses on the consideration of local project sponsor requests as far as transportation is involved. So if there's any councilman that would like to attend that, again, that is February 18th, and I'll send that out to you guys. Another one is the Rural Economic Development Roundtable in March. Representative from federal, state, and private funding agencies will be on hand to discuss funding. And this is at Orange County Community College on March 24th, and there is an RSVP if anybody wants to go. It's from 10:00 to 1:00 at Orange County Community College, and I'll get that out to you guys, too. We did receive, should I take your thunder? Why are you going to do that? We received our exit interview from the Comptroller's Office. Our risk assessment to see if we would need a full audit from the state on our financial processes and transactions did not warrant a full audit by our Comptroller's Office. There were a few things that they recommended, such as tagging some of our major assets, so that we keep track of those assets. There was one purchase where there wasn't a verification of the purchase, although we know the purchase happened. It was through the VFW. And as far as our passwords, they're secure on our computers, but they made another suggestion. One of the things that I was forewarned in going into this and requesting from the Comptroller's Office to check out, to see if we need a warrant, was they'll never walk away not pointing anything out. So, and they didn't. But they were very minor. They said we're doing a great job. Our City Clerk Treasurer and her staff is doing a wonderful job. They're going to work on an update of our purchasing policy using the New York State model policy, and they're just waiting for the printed report, but this is the synopsis of that, of those findings. I have on hand the Upper Delaware Scenic Byway Committee's January 27th meeting minutes. We do not have a representative right now, so if there's anybody in the general public that is interested in the Upper Delaware Scenic Byway, please contact my office. It usually is the fourth Monday of every month, but it is a little bit of a travel. It's up in Narrowsburg. Yeah, it's in Narrowsburg, so it's once a month in Narrowsburg. But if you're interested in the effects of the river and the nature around us, you're more than welcome to join up for this. I think that might be all that I have.
No way.
Yep. Well, I have a youth report now, so that takes care of that. And I got Stanley over there for code and legislative. City Clerk Treasurer's report, Ms. Wazaneger.
Yep. Well, as Mayor indicated, we've been busy answering questions for the offices, they control our staff, and yes, the audit went very well. And one thing that they will probably not put in their exit AMV report is that they were extremely impressed with our, actually with our cash register system, because it is fully integrated with both our water billing system and our general ledger systems. And it's the first time they've run into it within their auditing in New York State. So they did spend a little extra time documenting the whole process, just because they were impressed with the reporting, with the tracking that it gives us, and all the controls that it gives us over our cash receipts. So they relay that to the software company that developed this, and they were happy today. So, you know, at least that is one good addition that we put on, you know, a lot of other towns and villages in the city just coming up. And other than that, we are continuing to do more and more audit work, because we have our internal auditors scheduled to come the end of March, and so we are busily working to close everything out from 2013, and restarting and resetting everything for 2014. And everybody got their tax bills, their lottery bills, and everybody who brought the payments in through our offices. So January was extremely busy. We're looking for a little breathing room in February while we redo all of our audit work in the same four March. However, I always give you a fair warning, beware the eyes of March. March 15th is when the city tax bills come out. So, you and Julia Caesar, beware the eyes of March. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Wazaneger. All business, Mr. Segal.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just as an aside, when we went to the New York State Citizen Preparedness Program, they announced the fact that the two mayors there, one was Mayor Calley Decker from the city of Port Jervis, and the governor's photographer came running over to introduce himself or to greet the mayor, and I looked up, and it was a Port Jervian, Darren McPhee, who lived here in his youth. His father was a part-time police officer, and they moved to Albany when the Railway Express went out of business, or Red Star went out of business, I'm sorry. But it was really cool to see one of our own with all these cameras taking pictures of the mayor.
He's the personal photographer of the governor of the state of New York from Port Jervis.
Unbelievable. Used to be at my house all the time. Just wanted to...
That's why I moved the wet.
They still got that charm.
They come to the furnace frayed every single year.
Yeah, that's what he said.
Those floors are guests. So, there, Frank. Just the regular business about, there's snow on the streets. There's not a lot of room in the streets for the vehicles to traverse. It's dangerous, it's slippery out there. People need to stop walking in the streets. Somebody is going to get hurt. I hope that nobody gets hurt bad or killed, but they have to discontinue that, because it's very difficult to maintain proper control of your vehicle in that kind of weather. It's bad when it's dry, but when it's like this, it's terrible. So please, if you can walk somewhere else, try a sidewalk. And crossing and crosswalks, when people are in a crosswalk, they stepped off the curb and they want to go across, again, especially because of the conditions of the roads, please go slow, come to a stop, and let them cross. And if you have a hydrant near your house, in front of your house, your neighbor can shovel it out, give them a hand and help them out. I had one lady come up to me the other day, and she goes, "Stan, I saw your note on Facebook, but I simply couldn't do three feet around that hydrant." We don't need three feet, we just need enough room so that they know where it is, they can get at it and take the tap off and hook up a hose. And I guess that's enough.
Thank you, Mr. Segal. Mr. Oney.
Thank you, Stan. No mayor, nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie.
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Hendrick?
Nothing, Mayor.
Mr. Bobozzo?
I just wanted to add something that had been said earlier by the mayor, and also a bit by Stan there. But I think that the people of the city of Port Jervis should be very grateful for having the department heads that they have. And certainly, from our perspective, having lost one, you can see the shoes that need to be filled. But a winter like this affects more than just one department, it affects how all departments ultimately do their jobs, and the ability of the department heads to adjust, and the employees to carry through with those adjustments, so far has been terrific. And I think that pretty much any place you go, you can always point out things that can be better. But certainly in the city of Port Jervis, things could be much, 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 much worse. And I think that a lot of credit ought to be given to the department heads, who are excellent in what they do, and the dedicated employees of the city. And just remember, they're doing the absolute best they can with the resources that are available to them. So, thank you, Mayor. Nothing else.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Cunningham?
Nothing, Mayor.
Mr. Walagroski?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Bell?
I'd just like to also thank the DPW, Vince and Jack, their crews did, I thought, a superb job through these storms. And we all need to appreciate it. superb job through these storms, and we all need to appreciate it. It's nice to be able to get out and go to work when you have to go.
New business, sir.
And I do, I do still work even by age. No new business, Mayor.
Mr. Walagroski, new business. Yes, Mayor, thank you. Mr. Bell just said, some of us, you know, even though he does work out of town, I work out of town. Mayor, I'm gonna ask you, if you would, if you could write a letter to the governor, seeing you got in good with him over the weekend. We all know, the other day, there was an article in the paper, the question was, was it a good or a bad thing to shut down Interstate 84? A lot of people probably just looked at that and just pushed it aside. I know for a fact Mr. Bell goes over the hill, I go over the hill, Mr. Ritchie, Mr. Oney, and many other residents in this town, whether it be in the medical field, the professional field, we have EMS dispatchers, fire dispatchers, we have police officers that work in other towns. I personally feel, from taking that trip, that it was a big, it's a big mistake for the governor to order Interstate 84 shut down and then not have any maintenance on the road at all. Some people have to get to work, okay? One of the other, one of my big things why it popped into my head again was with the recent closing of the maternity ward at Bon Secours Hospital. I had a four-wheel drive vehicle the other day, I drive over every single day, and that road was treacherous. It's the worst I've seen since I've been driving on Interstate 84. If they're gonna close it, they should at least make it accessible for emergency vehicles or anything like that. So I personally feel that it was wrong that the governor of the state of New York shut down a major thoroughfare from the city of Port Jervis, which has the minimal hospital that, yeah, they could probably triage the patient, keep him there, whatever. That's not what we're looking for. People need to be able to get out, over to another hospital in case of an emergency, or even, not even the people, an ambulance, anything. Even if we had a fire truck, had to get up those, I'm telling you, it was the worst ever. I'm gonna ask that we send a letter to the governor of the state of New York, asking him that he reconsider's closing Interstate 84 in the future for those reasons I had mentioned. Thank you. Anything else, sir? I said it. New business, Mr. Cunningham?
Nothing, Mayor.
Mr. Bavoza?
No new business, Mayor.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for executive session, for litigation, and invite Mr. Lopez, DPW Director, and for contractual with regards to the DFC grant that I spoke about, and invite Chief Warden, and I make that a motion.
A motion by Mr. Hendrick, second by Mr. Walagroski. Discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Could we add contractual also for the beach road pump station?
Gotcha.
I'll amend my motion to include that, Mayor.
Second. Thank you. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? So carried. Anything else, sir?
Oh, that's it.
Mr. Ritchie?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Oney?
No, Mayor.
Mr. Segal?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to set a public hearing on Local Law Number 1 of 2014 for February 24th at 7:00 PM.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Segal to set a public hearing for Local Law Number 1, second by Mr. Bavoza. Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? So carried.
Thank you. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bell, the neighborhood, Fourth Ward Neighborhood Watch Meeting is the 19th, not the 12th, as it says on the calendar.
I believe you are correct.
It's a one up and one down.
Five winters, a good batting average.
And I, when I talked about codes, I didn't want to scare people off. We're looking for people to come and participate in the codes meetings. Much of what I listed off will be for discussion as to whether or not we want to pursue it, so we won't be spending four or five hours at the meeting, it'll only be a little bit of time.
Two hours.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Public comment, three-minute limit, if anybody'd like to come up and speak, just state your name and your ward.
Mr. Tomasi, Second Ward. Going back to the snow thing, you had already mentioned it a few times, could you just remind me, you're Mr. Mayor or somebody, the citizens, what is their responsibility as far as the sidewalk being cleaned in and around their property? Fire hydrants, is it their responsibilities, city's responsibility, and corners that might be closer to their property? And also what your timing expectations are for plowing when there's a snowstorm, or...
And the width of the clearance?
Clearing sidewalks in front of houses that don't have residents, they're abandoned or whatnot. As of Sunday, yesterday, I'm still finding corners that haven't had the sidewalks cleaned. Mr. Segal, perhaps that's why somebody was in the street. I run on the weekends, I had to run in the street. There were sidewalks that either had abandoned houses, or there were sidewalks that were impassable that were well within, you know, the city. So I understand it is a big load to carry. It's not criticism, I'm just asking if you could just remind folks what they should be doing that's in their purview, and when you figure, DPW, the city should clear out those sidewalks.
Well, the code is very specific about clearing. It's 40, 24 hours?
4 hours after. 24 hours after the end of the season.
And width is 24 inches. 24 inches wide, 24 inch, uh, 20, excuse me, 24 hours after, after the snow falls. If you're, if you live on a corner, you're responsible for the corner and the openings to the curb cuts. The fire hydrants, if they're in front of your house, is it mandated? It's not mandated, but it's requested, right? It's just requested that you clear out the fire hydrants. It helps, it helps all of you and your neighbors, should there actually be a fire, and if they have to dig out the fire hydrant, you know, before they can get to save your house or your family, it's kind of devastating. The fire department does go out and try to clear them as best as they can, but your help is definitely appreciated. As far as abandoned homes, the homeowner of record is responsible for it. Unfortunately, it takes a big load off our DP, onto our DPW because they end up being the ones that have to clear that after they've, after they've cleared the streets, and like you just said, they've been working on them all day today because some banks or homeowners that have walked away from those homes are just not being responsible. They get billed for it, but the reimbursements are long down the line before, we really don't have the ability to waste this manpower to clear them off. I can tell you that what I do as a good neighbor, I do have a vacant house next to me, I clear it off. I would suggest that, that'd be the good thing to do for your neighborhood, but you're not responsible for that. What you are responsible for is 24 hours after the storm, 24 inches wide. Said?
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other?
Mayor, just so everybody knows, and I'm sure this, it's gotten bigger, Mr. Tomasi, you say about vacant properties, we just, in January alone, 37 properties that the DPW had to maintain, either vacant, abandoned, or whatnot, or city, you know, some city-owned properties, on top of everything else that they, you know, do to keep their roads, because this was just a list that, from the building department.
Yeah, there's 70 altogether, just so you know, there's 70 pieces of property that they end up doing.
I'm sort of, not according to rules. I had posted out there, if somebody was interested in shoveling, if some kid was interested in shoveling, because a friend of mine had said, I need to make this trouble my, you know, my yard, where are the kids in the neighborhood? And sure enough, somebody posted, hey, my son wants to go, you know, whatever, so, and which was great. Is there some way, is there some way, maybe with the upcoming snowstorm, that the city might suggest through the Recreation Department or whatever, whatever you might find use, to maybe put those people or those abandoned houses or whatnot together with some youth that they can earn a couple of bucks, nothing, nothing, and clear those, you know, DPW has a lot to do.
It's certainly a consideration, we run into a liability problem, but I, you know, it's definitely something. Same thing with cutting the grass in the summertime.
Louis pointing at his son, I believe, that.
Any other, anybody else from the public?
Me and him would do it.
Hearing nobody else from the public, I'd like to have a motion for executive session. Motion by Mr. Bavoza, second by Mr. Ritchie. All in favor? We will probably be voting on some items when we come out of executive session.